I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 20th Richmond City School Board Meeting.
Will the board members who are present please respond? Mr. Sturtevant?
Here.
Ms. Gray, Mr. Bourne, Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Harris Mohammed, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Pinkney Epps, Mrs. Larson, Mr. Coleman.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Hold on, Ms., the agenda you wanted me to...
The adoption comes.
Okay, great, alright. We'll have our student lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
The next item is the adoption of the agenda and I do have several changes, Mr. Chair. We want to amend the agenda to add approval of bus leases under the superintendent's report, remove contracts from closed, and move item 4.06 to 4.01.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Sturtevant and seconded by Mrs. Larson, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The amended agenda is amended as presented. The next item is item two, recognitions. And we have several recognitions this evening. And we ask that as the students or person's name is called, they come to the front. If there are family members or staff from the school, please stand and be recognized. And you can get your certificate, excuse me, from Ms. Friend. She will be at the back of the room, but come forward when your name is called. The first recognition is going to the Armstrong High School Girls Golf Club. It is comprised of seven dedicated high school females. They participated in their first golf tournament with Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, and they were sponsored and awarded participation medals. The Armstrong Golf Club is coached by Jennifer Powell and assistant coach John McKinney, who are teachers at Armstrong. And Victor Brown also provides golf lessons to these students. The Armstrong Golf Club is aligned with First T's nine core values, which are courtesy, confidence, honesty, integrity, judgment, perseverance, respect, responsibility, and sportsmanship. So as I call your name, please come forward. Shanice Charity, Antoinette Rivers, Ayanna Boyd, Makwesha Boyd, Trey Young, Siobhan Bullock, Kendra Scott. And the principal, Ms. Hawkins, is present. Where is she? Parents of these students, if you are present, please stand and be recognized. And any other family members that may be here. Thank you. And Ms. Friend is in the back with your certificate. Our next recognition goes to three gentlemen who helped in getting a marquee for Thomas Jefferson High School, and we would like to thank them for their time and commitment. Mr. Russell Flamia, Mr. Albert Nagren, and Mr. Warren Pierce. Before we go to the next item, Mr. Chair, let the record reflect, we've been joined by Dr. Jones, and our student is also present this evening, Montana McGruder.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is public information. I don't have any speakers who signed up in advance. What is your pleasure?
Well, hold on one second here. Sir, you wanted to say something to us? Mr. Sturtevant?
I think Mr. Pierce was gonna speak.
He's gonna speak during public information, okay, great.
Mr. Chair, is it three minutes per...
Three minutes for individuals, five minutes for groups.
Thank you. And please state your name for the record.
Warren Pierce with the Thomas Jefferson, the TJ Viking Fund, which is part of the marquee program that we were recognized for. Greetings to the Honorable Mr. Donald Coleman, Mr. Glenn Sturtevant, and other members of the school board. It's a great privilege and honor for me to stand here tonight on behalf of the students at Thomas Jefferson High School and as a representative of the TJ Viking Fund. Our TJ Viking Board is a dedicated group. We consist of a retired Thomas Jefferson High School teacher, several alumni, and a number of neighborhood parents. The bond that brings us together is a determination to make this landmark and historical high school one of Richmond's finest. In the few short years since the inception of this fund, it has raised over $140,000, which has been used to facilitate the refurbishment of the boys' varsity locker room, the installation of a state-of-the-art weight training facility, the installation of a new marquee at the corner of West Grace and Malvern, and the purchase of cheerleading equipment and uniforms, as well as benches for the football field, and several other items, many other items, as well as the erection of a new scoreboard, and the installation of a football field irrigation system, two projects that are currently in progress. The TJ Viking Fund is committed to working with the school board, parents, as well as the Viking neighborhood, to improve the conditions of the students by providing resources to encourage a stimulating and challenging environment, cultivating a positive atmosphere, and strengthening relationships with Albert Hill, Mary Munford, and our neighbors. Our neighbors, to mention a few. The International Mission Board has donated over $700 to help the girls' softball team get a start. Our neighbor, Estes Trucking, has donated $5,000 to help in the football field. Jessica Hendricks, the PTA president-elect at Mary Munford and coordinator of the Mary Munford Soccer League, helped to coordinate the donation drive that resulted in raising over $1,800 to provide the soccer team with new uniforms for both home and away, new soccer balls, new travel packs, and other items. We'd like to thank Westminster Presbyterian Church, under the leadership of Pastor Joel Morgan, who has opened his doors to provide meeting facilities for our board. They've hosted two successful fundraising events for our group, as well as homecoming luncheons for the football team and the cheerleaders. There are future plans that we hope to fund with your help, to include lights for the field, concession stand, outside bathrooms, and other things. We are entering an exciting period in the life of Thomas Jefferson High School, and the TJ Viking Fund is excited. We are excited about the roles that we play, the opportunities that continue to present themselves, and the ability to serve our city, our neighborhood, and above all, our students. So we thank you all for allowing us to partner with you as we strive together to make TJ an institution to be proud of. Thank you. And we have some brochures we'd like for you to see.
Yeah, we got them, we got them, thank you so much.
Oh, good.
Anyone else who would like to address the board at this time, if you would line up, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the school board. Good to see everybody. That's some group right there. If you look at the fact that they are not just gray-haired, but in some places hair-deficient, you would know that they went to TJ before it integrated. These guys woke up one day and said, "Whoa, that's my school." They got together, Albert Nagren and some of those folks, and went to work. I'm so proud of them, I can't tell you. And I just wish that all of our schools had that kind of rededication. We'd be a lot farther down the road, and I think we ought to appeal for such.
I'm here on behalf of Richmond Coalition for Quality Education, and I hope I can speak to this, the constituency service policy that you may be considering tonight. While I certainly salute anyone who is trying to establish better methodology and protocol, this one frightens me. All the courts in the world ask for least restrictive, not most restrictive, policy. Least restrictive. Well, you already have, my understanding, a policy on the books that prohibits school board members from directing, quote-unquote, directing staff to do things. Therefore, you must go through the superintendent. Anyway, this paper, and I'm perfectly willing to be told I'm wrong, sets us up with more restrictive means of following through on this policy. And the last thing I would think you'd want to do is give plaintiff's attorney an extra tool with this big fat policy sitting there if, in fact, a school board member conveys to the superintendent an emergency matter, and that matter somehow gets fallen through the cracks and somebody gets hurt. You are liable, and you've got policy establishing that. And so it just seems to be a bit, a step too far. It appears to be a bit of redundancy, and I'm perfectly willing to be told I'm wrong. But you already have that ability to require board members to go through the superintendent for matters of concern from constituents. I don't need, as a constituent, another barrier in between me and my government, and I would urge you to reconsider this policy. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, let the record reflect, you've been joined by Mrs. Taylor.
Good evening, my name...
Is there anyone here who needs interpretive services this evening? In Spanish, I'm looking for...
Good evening, my name is Shamira Miles, and I'm here representing and speaking for the Informed Neighbors of the East End. If my friends and residents and neighbors and coworkers and allies and friends alike would like to join as I speak, and I'd like to say excuse me for reading off of a paper because I'm speaking for a group and not just myself. We are the Informed Neighbor Corps, we are all residents of the Creighton Court community, and we are here to address the item on your Agenda 4.06 in regards to the deeds of the old Armstrong building and Wilken Court Elementary Schools. We came together to encourage transparency of the redevelopment process from the master developer, the community builders, also known as TCB, the City of Richmond, and the Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority, and to promote resident leadership in the housing redevelopment process. We support better and a higher quality of housing for all of the families in our community as well as informed neighbors. We know that, excuse me, as informed neighbors, we know that Phase One of the redevelopment of our community has been planned on the 12-acre site of the old Armstrong High School located on 31st Street. We also support better and quality schools for our children. Many of us here tonight are parents whose children currently attend Richmond Public Schools. We know firsthand that they are urgent maintenance needs, as your studies has estimated around $35 million. That's a lot of money, is it worth? We are here to challenge everyone as elected leaders. Please work with the city council to make this a win-win by figuring out how both of these things can happen. The quality of housing that our children live in is as important, if not more so, than the 30% of the waking hours that they spend inside of school buildings. Our bold vision is that our children live in as well as learn in a healthy and quality environment. Thank you all, and I have some information on that group if anyone would like to read up on the lovely people I have here. Thank you all.
Good evening, school board. We're here in support of the absence of Mr. Baraka from Huguenot High School as a group. Do all step forward. And those colleagues who are also here, may stand, please. Good evening, school board members, central office personnel, and other essential staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity...
Excuse me, ma'am, state your name.
I'm Cassandra Walker.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to address the issue concerning the absence of Mr. Baraka at Huguenot High School. Huguenot High has transitioned through several years of changes in school leadership. In August of 2012, we began a transformational journey at Huguenot. Students and teachers accepted the challenge from our leader to be respectful, responsible, accountable, courteous, and consistent. The implementation of Huguenot High's Five Ideals assisted in creating the positive school culture that's evident within our building, and has contributed in the success and achievement of our students. The transition in our school culture has created an environment conducive to learning and has fostered positive relationships among students, parents, and our community. The transformational change has established a sense of satisfaction, improved teacher and student morale, and has increased student motivation towards learning. As a school, we have partnered with the Virginia Senator for Inclusive Communities to acknowledge and promote the diversity within our school and our community. Moreover, under his leadership, the school is establishing a student council called HART that would allow students from every background and ability and level to help the staff create events for students at our school. Not only has Mr. Baraka's transformational vision produced a positive culture and climate within our building and organization, but it has manifested throughout our community. Under the leadership of Mr. Baraka, we now possess a dynamic team that continues to follow on the behaviors and the successes of our students while endorsing the spirit of excellence within our organization. He has shaped a vision for academic success, created a culture conducive to learning, and nurtured and enhanced leadership skills of others that cultivate school improvement. Mr. Baraka has established a freshman academy, which helps all of our freshman students in transition to high school by receiving instruction by highly qualified teachers who collaborate according to subject and grade level. Moreover, the teachers in the freshman academy also use their own disciplinary model that gives students several opportunities to implement a behavior improvement plan before they are formally written up or consequence by administration. Mr. Baraka has also established the Success Academy, which targets our students who are high-risk. Last year, the Success Academy had a 98% pass rate for the students involved in the program. Not only did 98% of the students advance to the next grade level, but several of the students who are in the program are now taking honors and advanced-level classes. In closing, Mr. Baraka's diligence and his dedication to Huguenot High School is evident. The transformational journey that we've embarked upon has created student growth and achievement that is evident within our school and community. For example, our SOL scores improved in math from 53% to 71%, English from 68% to 80%, science from 61% to 79%, and history from 71% to 74%. Therefore, Mr. Baraka's presence in our school is not an option, but it is a necessity. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Lieutenant Colonel Blanco. I'm the battalion commander of Huguenot High School. We're here representing the ROTC department and Huguenot High School students as well. Say your name.
Well, for one, good afternoon. Nice to see Mr. Coleman and Ms. Larson. I've had the pleasure of meeting both of you a couple weeks ago in front of the board on Floor 17. But we are here this afternoon to... Oh, I apologize. My name is Jermaine Jackson. I'm the battalion executive officer of Huguenot High School. I'm here in representation to the Huguenot High School Falcons, the school, JROTC, every club, basically not everything we stand for, but here for every student that has been touched by Mr. Baraka. And what I mean by touched as I mean...
We have a petition. It's inclusive student-wise, so it was signed by, like, I'll say 75% of the students. They signed the paper. I was a student only to let one Mr. Baraka back on Huguenot. Because the easiest way to say it is, Huguenot High School was going, let's say, was going up, and we were going up, and, like, our level was going up, and then after he left, well, basically, we're going down. He's been going down, all the troubles...
All the fights and everything are coming back.
Yeah.
And he did a huge difference in Huguenot High School.
As an ROTC cadet, we want our cadets to behave the right way, the way they're supposed to do it, and when Mr. Baraka came, they actually were doing it, behaving the right way. And then he left, and then we noticed that that is changing right now.
It is a very diverse situation. When I was in ninth grade, we had a principal's name was Dr. Lyles. He left Huguenot High School. But for my 10th and 11th grade year, we've had Mr. Baraka, and ever since we've had him, we've had the ideals, we've had the respect level, the morale level higher, we've had more participation in not just activities, but in school, just a whole lot of things that we have now because of Mr. Baraka. And in his absence, we haven't just lost these things, but it's a whole lot worse. I just want to thank all of you for listening and hearing what we have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Oliver Norrell. I am the chair of the Military Science Department at Huguenot High School, retired from the Virginia Army National Guard at the rank of colonel. I've been at the school for a year, but I will tell you, in my travels and in my experience, one thing I have found is that to have a strong leader makes a difference in the deportment and in the, in this case, the learning of the students. One thing I've noticed, the five ideals that Ms. Walker just expressed are lived by the students. Not all of them, because they're still juveniles, but most of them follow those ideals of being respectful, responsible, accountable, courteous, and consistent. I will tell you, when I first got there, I was, I had been teaching adults. I started teaching teenagers. You can imagine the shock I had when I got there, but however, I've recovered, and I say that only to say that... I'm still here, too. But I say that only to say that the students have shown that they are willing to follow a strong leader. Not that I am that leader, but Mr. Baraka is that leader that they have been following since I've been there. And I strongly urge the board to return Mr. Baraka to his rightful place at Huguenot High School. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Major Branch, retired. Been in this business of military science my 15th year, five years at Huguenot High School. I see Ms. Harris Mohammed over there. I had her son when I was at Benedictine for 10 years, and I made a real made a man out of him, I'm certain. But anyway, back to Huguenot High School. I've seen some changes in my five years there. Mr. Baraka has done a super splendid job, and I've seen two high-speed graduations in his two years that he's been there, working on the third year. I'm just hoping he'll come back because we were climbing. It appears now that we are in a dive, and we need to catch before we crash and burn. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is James Westmoreland. I am a 1995 graduate of Huguenot High School, and after a circuitous route through the private sector, I decided to go back to college and get my degree. And when I decided to be a teacher, there was nowhere else I wanted to be than Huguenot High School. So in 2009, I applied and got a job with Richmond Public Schools and Huguenot High School. However, when I got back, when I got there, the conditions of the school were abysmal. I was heartbroken as a former student to see where the condition of the working conditions of the teachers, as well as the students, had gotten. In the first two years there, changes were non-coming, and I was disheartened, and was thinking about seeking employment in another district just for uncomfort in the position. However, a light shone off in the distance, and that was Mr. Baraka. Since Mr. Baraka's... Since Ms. Baraka has arrived, everything has changed. There's a positive attitude amongst the staff and students, and you can see the changes as they go. And so I would just really implore upon you to let you know that a ship without a rudder is lost. Please give us back our rudder, Mr. Baraka.
And thank you. This concludes our presentation.
Good evening, all. I am Thomas Cox of, the president of Saving Our Youth, and I'm the assistant of Richmond Chapter to God and Angels. And I just have something briefly. I come before the Richmond School Board to ask for their pledge to provide quality education to Highland Park children and to support the plan to rebuild a blighted, dull public housing community into a sustainable, 360 diverse, working-family housing community with a new Overby Shepherd preschool through 5th grade elementary school. Thank you.
See, anyone else who would like to address the board tonight?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Charles Willis. Come to you today in regards to documentation that you should have before you, asking for your support. As serving as chair currently of the Multicultural Task Force, and one that has a great interest in being educated about the necessity and the things that are needed to help build a better school district, a better city. There's a conference that's being scheduled November the 5th through the 9th. I do want to say that I've been seeking funding and have been granted a funding from the Virginia Education Association, and proud of that because they saw fit that the community partnership along with Richmond Public Schools was very important, as well as our representative here from the R.E.A., Michelle Air, has very well informed of this also and has shared with me that she's in full support. However... However, at this time, the funding that, well, of course, the Multicultural Task Force doesn't have any funding, but we saw that it was a great need as a committee to make sure that we have an opportunity to learn as much as we can so we can come back and inform the Board. So I've spoken with some of you all individually, but collectively, there's a need, there's an urgent need, and I've sent the email out, that if the support is available, that that support would be made available so that not only myself, but as early as this afternoon, the VEA has also, has also pledged an additional $600 so that someone from the committee that is of Latino nature would be able to come, go also to this conference. So again, I ask that you please take a look at the information that's before you. You all should know, I believe some of your Board members are attending that conference, and we would like to go as citizens and partnership with, so that we can make a better school district by being informed with the others. I also want to share with you that serving currently as Chair of the Multicultural Task Force, I know we were scheduled to be before you all today. I've talked with the Chair and we agreed that maybe there's another time, but I do want to urge you to please reach out to the Multicultural Task Force for any additional information that you may need in, in the interval of us meeting and bringing a presentation. There's a number of things that should have been before you all back in December that could very well address the OCR complaint that you, that is before the Board. And I, we believe, not I, but we believe that this information is very important to you all and that we are available at any time to make sure you have it. I encourage you, that there's a paper before you today that deals with the deed situation with Armstrong and Woodcombe Court. I know you all have visited this issue many a times. I don't believe in throwing the baby out with the bathwater, but I know that the opening of a welcome center, which is top priority, that should be before the Board, that that piece is in there, and I encourage you to also support the Community Affairs of Economic Development, especially when it grows across the board culturally. So again, thank you so much for your support and advance, and I'm available in the back room, that if there's any additional information that's needed, then I will try my best to make that available. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and God bless you.
The next item is Item 4, Minutes and Presentation of Official Business and Items for Action. You did change your agenda earlier, so the new 4.01 is to approve the issuance of the quitclaim deeds for the old Armstrong building at Wickham Court Elementary.
This should be.
My name is Douglas Dunlap, and I am representing Administration this evening. We did not come out, or I didn't come this evening prepared with a presentation. We know that we have been before the Board, and I believe this is the fourth time we've presented. On several occasions, we've also met with individuals from the Board on one, on one basis to answer specific questions. So I am here this evening along with other members from the community, the councilperson from the 7th District, Ms. Cynthia Newbill, residents from the East End, from the Creighton Court community and surrounding community. We also have a number of representatives from our partners who are providing support and assistance in this effort to transform this neighborhood. So we're here tonight in support of this effort, and I'm here to answer any questions that any of you may have relative to the project.
Mr. Highland Grove?
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Krantz.
I don't have anything to add. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Armstrong?
This is the...
Okay, I just, it says Highland Grove up on the top, so I just want to know where we were. I'm sorry. Maybe that's the next item. Okay, great. Thank you. Infusion. Please. Mr. Krantz, when is the last time Armstrong was in use? I mean, when did we surplus? How long has it been surplus? Do you know?
I don't know exactly.
When did we surplus the building?
2005.
It was June 16th, 2005. That's the old Armstrong building.
That's correct.
And are we responsible for maintaining, or is the city, since it's been surplus back to the city?
The city, the city has maintained, the maintenance of both the old Armstrong building as well as the Wickham Court Elementary site.
So that's not some, that's not a cost that comes off of our books?
No, sir.
Okay.
This question is for Mr. Krantz. The South Side plot location for the Multicultural Task Force, is that still connected to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Remind me of the timetable, Mr. Dunlap, of when you all would like this to be consummated. Walk me through the timeline again. Go ahead. From our perspective, we are looking to transfer the property as soon as we possibly can. We've already submitted as a, as a partnership and as a team, an application to begin addressing the zoning issues. We have made application for a conditional community unit plan, and that community unit plan will be used to address the zoning. Currently, it is zoned for residential R5. There are uses that are being proposed for the site that would require us to actually create a zoning district that has multiple zoning designations there. The way that CUP is written will allow us to do townhomes, it will allow us to do mid-rise apartments, all of that will be contained on the site. That application is, has already been submitted. As we move forward, the application is, the purpose for the application is so that we will be able to apply for financing. And our goal for applying for financing is around responding to the federal NOVA, which will come out at the end of this year. But for us, it's imperative that we have control of the property as we make application because only properties that we have control over can be considered as we look at moving forward with the development. So for us right now, we are, the application is in, and we need control of the property now as we speak.
Follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. And from the Economic Development Project, what sort of the general phasing of that? I mean, it, I know it's generally referred to as East End Revitalization in Creighton and Wickham. Is there, is there an order which housing development will be written up first?
Sure. Sure. We will start with housing development on that site using probably low-income tax credit dollars. Those resources will be used to develop our first phase. We'll be looking at anywhere from 220 to 280 units on that site. Again, the goal would be to move enough of the units, relocate enough of the residents from Creighton Court to create an area on the existing Creighton Court site so that we can then move back to that site and again, begin developing single-family homes, additional workforce units, as well as new public housing units on that site.
And so the Creighton Court development, redevelopment will occur, then the Wickham Court redevelopment will...
That's correct.
And I asked a question because there's been some discussion at each of the presentations about, we have sort of a lot of tracks going down, a lot of trains going down the track. We have the Mayor's, you know, School Maintenance Finance Group, we have our Facilities Task Force, we have this development plan. And so, you know, one of the things that we struggle with is making sure that we have all the information to make, make an informed decision.
That's correct.
And so, is, does it, is it a deal killer if, for say, for instance, we would separate Wickham and separate Armstrong? You know, if Armstrong's really the most immediate need, so that we can have a fuller discussion, at least with respect to Wickham, the Wickham School property?
Right. Well, what I would say in response to that is that we've made a commitment to both neighborhoods, and we want to show movement in both neighborhoods. We know that development will occur in Creighton Court first. Our reasoning behind purchasing or transferring, I should say, transferring the property at Wickham is so that we also can demolish that. And there are health and safety reasons why we're doing that, but there are also reasons of, behind us showing to that community that we are taking steps towards actually making improvements there. And sometimes those improvements come in the way of demolition and not necessarily new construction.
Mr. Bourne?
No, I'll wait till Mr.
You'll wait till Mr. Bourne? Mr. Bourne?
Dr. Jones is a gentleman and a scholar. No, the reason I ask is, is it seems like in the development process, the Armstrong site is more timely, more critical in the short term. And so, if in fact, we were able to sort of bifurcate the two school properties, and because Armstrong's the most immediate, and then have a fuller discussion with all of the information on Wickham, I'm just wondering if that approach would really hinder your efforts? Because by the time we get to Wickham, the school task force will come back, the school, Mayor's School Finance Group will have come back with their recommendations, will probably likely be in the middle of budget discussions, so we can have at least a more informed discussion at that point in time. And I'm just asking, I'm not suggesting one way or the other.
I'm, I hear exactly what you're saying, but as I said, the commitment that was made to Creighton Court is the same commitment that we've made to the residents of Wickham as well. And I think, you know, from our perspective, if we are not, again, taking advantage of this opportunity to rid this nuisance, this blighting influence, and it's, the individuals behind me can speak to the amount of square footage that we have there, we could also have individuals speak to the issues and concerns that we've had with kids getting into that building and the chances, opportunities of some sort of catastrophe occurring around that, I don't think that that would be something that any of us would be comfortable dealing with. At this point, again, what I would say is, you know, we've, we've investigated what it would cost to take that building down. We've given some thought to the timing for taking that building down, and we would like to move forward on both sides at the same time. So while it is pressing right now that we have control of Armstrong, we think it also is very important that we have control of Wickham so that we can move forward in both neighborhoods.
Okay, Dr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we transfer the property, the Wickham building and the Armstrong property to the city.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Lill?
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that there is a resolution that is attached to this for the approval of those same properties, so I did not want you to...
Okay.
...neglect that.
Do we have the resolution? Do we have the resolution? Okay.
I got you.
So, we'll have to include the... The proclamation.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, we're just taking a look at the resolution that encompasses the entirety of what the city is asking for and what the district would receive in return. And so, if it helps from a legal perspective, I guess my motion would be to, to transfer the property, transfer the Wickham Elementary Building, the Armstrong Building, to the city, inclusive of the language that is already included in the resolution that we have.
So would Dr. Jones have to state his motion?
That's great.
Well, I support the Creighton community as well, and I support the children who are currently in school buildings that are inadequate, and I've been fighting to get those school buildings up to par. So, I'm really at an impasse because I've been here long enough to know that when we transfer properties and we're given all these promises of things to come, they haven't surfaced. So, what I would ask for tonight, from, we have two council members here, we have the Creighton community represented, for those folks who are here, who are in the power to send the money to fix these buildings, to build a new school in the East End, to take Wickham, I mean, to take Woodville and Fairfield offline, and give, give that community a new school building. Because I don't think your housing development is going to be a success if you're putting kids in buildings that are crumbling. I would ask those who are present to commit to fighting with me to get the money from the city to, to bring a new school online, to bring a new elementary school to replace those, so that when this community gets built, those children who move into that community will have an adequate learning environment to go along with it. That's, that's why I've been holding off, because I've seen too many projects go forward in this city, taking money out of the coffers, and, and when it comes to fixing rooftops and things falling apart, nobody has a dime. But, but when folks show up to, to make beer, money is found, or when folks show up to play sports, money is somehow discovered. So, I would like a commitment from the Creighton community to stand with me and fight for a new school building, not just, not just an elementary, but a high school and a new, we've got a new MLK, but, and from our council members present. So, that's, that's what I would need. I, I know words are sometimes lost, things are lost in translation, but I would love to, to hear you to speak to that.
Before I allow our two council persons to speak, I am going to speak on behalf of our development team. And I will say that addressing the schools, the facilities, and also the outcomes of the students that will attend those schools have been central to the conversations that we've had relative to this development project. And so, we understand and recognize that there is no way that we will be able to transform the neighborhood if we don't have strong schools. We will not be able to attract residents to the neighborhood if we don't have strong schools, because we recognize that that is chief as, and priorities, as individuals are making decisions about the neighborhoods that they will relocate to. So if we, if our goal is to attract families, we can attract individuals, single individuals, couples without kids, are not want to be caught up, are as concerned about the schools, but because we are attempting to attract families to this neighborhood, we recognize the importance of having strong schools. And our goal is that the new schools will be a selling point to those individuals that we're trying to attract to this neighborhood as we transform it. So I want you to, the, the members of School Board to understand that the partnership recognizes it. So, you know, while the partnership itself won't be necessarily making the final decisions about city funds that are allocated, we will be there supporting... be there supporting the school board, the council persons who are standing to my left as they advocate on behalf of those residents, those new residents, residents that we're trying to attract, and the existing residents who also deserve better schools.
Mr. Dunlop, you're saying our two esteemed council persons are part of your presentation now?
Well, as I said earlier, we did not come with the presentation, so if they...
But we're going to let them be part of your presentation. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Coleman, Chair, and members of the school board. My name is Cynthia Newbell, and I have the honor and pleasure of representing the 7th District East End Community. And one of the residents spoke earlier, more eloquently, Shamir, about the commitment to transforming our community. And when we talk about transformation of communities, we're not just talking about bricks and mortar, we're not just talking about housing. Housing, people, green space, but equally as critically, schools. And for us, in the context of the Creighton transformation, where the discussion has been, has to do with Fairfield and Woodville School. And being sure that in the planning process, and I believe unless I stand corrected here, you have had a person at the table prospectively, not after the fact, but during the planning, because it's that important. If we're not talking about educating children, then we've missed the point. Children exist in the context of families, in the context of communities. And if we're going to transform communities, schools have to be central to that. And so, I am committed to that. And ensuring that we have within, not just within the Creighton community, but that just is the beginning of a conversation, because you know, I have five elementary schools in my district, middle school, high school, all of which we need to have some discussion about, as well as the schools throughout the rest of the city, because they're all our children. And so, I'm committed there, and looking at that school in that context, it's in closest proximity to the Creighton development, but looking even more broadly at what is the experience for our children on a daily basis, and ensuring that they're in facilities that prepare them to be highly successful in a very global, highly technological society that's driven by state-of-the-art curriculum, curriculum and innovation. We're not there yet, but I know we're all committed to getting there. And so, yeah, maintenance is a piece of the discussion, but that's only the beginning. That's at the front end to talk about. Then what is the construction plan to get to those state-of-the-art facilities? And I know that I am, and I have colleagues who are committed to that kind of discussion about schools, but more critically about the future of our children. So, I'm not...
Councilwoman Larson?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here. School board members, I'm Ellen Marbison, and I have the great honor of representing the 6th District of the City of Richmond. And I will say in response to your question, Ms. Gray, the responsibility of funding schools and providing revenue for education for our schools is a priority of the City of Richmond, is a priority of this council, and is an extreme priority as it relates to our redevelopment strategies for redeveloping our communities that have been disenfranchised, disinvested, have been concentrated with poverty, and we have dealt with the fallout and the impact of those decisions of the past. As it relates specifically to Armstrong, I think a lot of information, a lot of planning has been done, a lot of detailed planning has been done, a lot of information on the specifics of the budget, including providing for schools and the other amenities that are necessary to build a quality community, is a total comprehensive package that certainly, I think, is available to all of us, and I welcome and encourage us to continue to have more small group discussions, special task force that are set up specifically to deal with neighborhood by neighborhood, so that we understand that whole process. The same as it relates to the budget. You know, we struggle every year to balance our budget and to meet our priorities and do the things that needs to be done for the city. We're not always pleased with the outcome, we wish that we could do more than what perhaps we can do in any one, two-year budget cycle. But I can assure you, when we learned of the level of concerns that the residents in Wickham had, and we visited that site and saw where the children were going in and out of that building, and parents were very concerned about the safety of their kids, we put forth a special effort with the administration and asked them, if we could get control of this building, is it possible for us to take this building down? You know, it's a safety issue. I mean, none of us want anything to happen. And whereas I recognize the importance that we really are moving farther with the development with the Armstrong, this is, this is a no-brainer as far as what it would cost us to take this building offline and eliminate the risk of somebody's child being injured or worse in a blighted building. That we've been informed of what's going on. So, the continuation of funding as relates to building schools is an absolute commitment of this council, is a commitment of the city, and in many cases, we've demonstrated by having the money already in the budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Stern, and Ms. Lilly, could I see you for a second? Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you for the presentation. I, I think the work that you all are doing is phenomenal. I think this is a great plan in the East End. Where I come from on the school board is, we have a fiduciary duty to manage our resources, which includes the properties that we own. And so, the concern with this proposal and the resolution for me is that while it's doing a good thing of revitalizing this community, the school system is giving up one of its vital resources, one of the few things that we have to offer back to the city in a, in a, in a situation like this. Because we're a landlocked city, we're not getting any additional real estate. And so, with the facilities needs that we have that are significant, this plan, this proposal, this resolution would be much more palatable to me if there were, were actual dollars tied to it that would be directed to our capital and, and facilities' needs. And so, that's, that's the issue, issue for me. We've got $30 million in emergency funding that we need for our facilities, and we're giving up a, a significant block of our assets in this. And so, that's the concern for me, and that's something that I would like to see as part of this, as part of this proposal.
Ms. Mohammed?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you all so much for coming out again. I just wanted to reiterate that a couple of weeks ago, when we, when we received an email about this project and some other items, I replied all to everybody that was on the email, and I stated, "It would be wonderful if we could have a meeting of the minds." Only three people replied. Two people replied via email, and one person replied via face at the cycling event. The reason why I'm bringing that up is because it just seems to me that we find opportune times to express certain things when, when both entities need to come together and discuss what has been shared this evening and over time. I'm not an individual that wants to block development, because I strongly believe that development and the success of schools go together. So, I'm just putting it out there again that we should have a meeting of the minds. If certain things burns our spirit to the core, then we should be able to wear our big pants and reach out to the other people who do support us by having a meeting, so we can show support, instead of allowing outside distractions to make it appear that we are not on the same page when it comes to schools and economic development. I know we're the governing body of the school district, make no mistake. However, it, it just, it, it appears to me that we, you know, we're wasting, and we've asked this group to come out again to talk with us about the purpose and why all of this is happening, when they have asked us, they even called me personally at work to say, "Do you have any questions? Do you have time to meet?" So, I mean, it's, it's like three or four weeks into this, and I'm not forcing anyone hand. It's just, to me, we need to move forward with the success of children.
Dr. Jones?
This is the third or maybe the fourth time this has been before us, and I think that there definitely times to be defiant. I think that there are times where we should challenge certain things. But I happen to think that this is good for the city, it's good for that community, that this project will take place in. It certainly is an asset that is ours. However, we've heard from our own administration tell us ad nauseam that it would cost more to, you know, get that building in shape and bring it back than it's even worth right now. And so, you know, we, we can hang on to it because we can, but I don't think that that's the right thing to do, just because we can do it. And so, I think we have an opportunity here to remove an eyesore and a blight from that community. I think we have an opportunity here to be a part of something that's bigger. We don't have a plan for that building right now. We have not had a plan for that building. And so, you know, I, I just think that it's a little bit disingenuous to just hold on to it. For, for what? For what? What are we holding on to it for right now? What, what's the plan for it? Are we, we gonna hold the mayor and city council hostage for, for more mon... I mean, that's a conversation that we all have to have. And I think that we see council members here tonight who are willing to have that conversation, but I don't think that it necessarily needs to, in, in order for that conversation to be had, that we have to hold this up. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
As the 7th District representative, I, I just want to make it clear to my colleagues that in my experience on the board and my experience in working with the city on projects, this has been an outstanding project where my involvement as a school board member has been deep and intense from the very beginning, my interactions with my council colleague around this whole project, meetings in the community, always been engaged. This, this, this is good, not just for the East End, but for the entire city, in modeling out what can happen when we do all work together. And so, again, I would encourage you to, to consider the opportunity to support this resolution as the 7th District representative. Thank you.
Ms. Gray?
And I want to thank those who spoke and, and to their commitment. And I think that for me, I was here with the Redskins vote, and I asked that with future planning of projects, that schools aren't put on the back burner and, you know, the secondary thought. And we had a resolution from council that said we were going to get the revenue from the Redskins, and we're going to get all these things, and that it was going to increase our, our budget. And it's very disappointing, because we have been talking about this for a long time, and I think that's the problem. We talk, but we don't always move and, and take action in the direction where we need to, because there are children in those buildings today that are being hurt by being in an inadequate school facility. So, you know, I support the development, I support the growth of the city. I, I was born here, I grew up here. This is my city, and I love this city. However, we have to move beyond the lip service and, and really start taking some action and get some money on the books to start doing some major renovations and new construction. So, I'm, I'm going to put my support behind this, and it's against my better judgment from, from my experiences with what happened in the past. But I'm going to hold you ladies who are here, because I know you, you really are committed to this, to, to work with me to get city council and the city administration to come onboard, to really start having, once we come out of our facilities committee with some strong recommendations, I would love for us to sit down and come up with a plan. And before we start talking about, you know, new, new private investments that we're going to pour our tax dollars into, we need to start looking at the children in the city and pour our tax dollars into them, because I think that's the only thing that's going to save us. So, you know, I'm, I get very frustrated when these things happen, because I feel very torn in making these decisions, because I feel, again, this is our last ability to negotiate. We don't have a way to raise funds. We have to depend on you all to send us those funds, and, and we're really in a bad spot.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay. This is a question to close the discussion. Okay. Madam Clerk?
To close, excuse me, Ms. Harris-Moehmert, call the question to close the discussion. It was seconded by Dr. Jones. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris-Moehmert?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Is unanimous to close the question, I mean, close the discussion. The motion was made by Dr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Harris-Moehmert, to transfer the Wickham Court Elementary School and the old Armstrong Building to the city, inclusive of the language in the resolution. Mr. Stern?
No.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Harris-Moehmert?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Of course.
Motion passes 7-1.
All right, thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is 4.02, Receive a Presentation Regarding the Highland Grove Project.
Let's take a, let's, two-minute recess here, let people exit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're leaving this baby off.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Grant's baby.
Ah!
Oh!
Oh, God!
Listen, if I don't go in, I don't touch it.
I'm dirtbag.
Clean that one up.
Yeah.
That's not me.
Bring my flowers.
Just nice for him.
I guess so, yes. But, you know, because this is a crazy process.
Every number.
Because they said when you have any... They take the pain, but it takes the... It does.
My grand...
I don't think that's necessary unless they ask us to leave it.
What's that?
I don't think they're planning to call for that to go tonight. But we knew we could get it, we could get together that way. But, uh, we'll see what happens.
We do have one by the chapel.
It's my daughter, my granddaughter.
She's pretty. Have you done? She does. Hi. Now, what's your name? No name? Oh, and how old are you? Eight? Seven? So, you're in second grade or third grade? Second? That's the same age my grandson is.
You're trying to talk, you're only seven.
Yeah, you are tall. Are you the tallest one in the class?
I'm just kidding about being a granddaughter.
Certain things you don't touch.
I think I was your high school in that grade. Certain things you never touch.
Oh, those are nice. Those are nice. What are we gonna accomplish if they, you know? What you wanna get?
Stage one, just warming them up.
Okay.
Letting know that the urgency and the need for the process of getting ready to have a master plan for the gas inside.
Okay.
They're telling on the army by the way they're near. They need to be able to be defensive and they're just going to work for the master.
Got it, yeah.
Their action is critical.
Right.
Get it with, you know, the timeline. We're working with them. They're responsive enough.
Okay.
So, my question is, whatever.
Just keep the ball moving is what we're trying to do. Okay, we need to move. We gotta keep this one moving. That's fine. Let's just keep the pressure on it. We just keep the heat on it. That's fine.
Yeah.
And we tie it to the facilities plant, so that's easy.
Yes.
Colleagues, we're gonna reconvene in two minutes. Two minutes.
Okay. This will be easy.
Yeah, this will be nice.
Yeah, I know. That's why it'll be easy today. You look too comfortable.
Sneaky.
Oh. Did you see her look bad? Yes. How you go so damn? Now, I was told to stand up there. I was asked to stand up there. Today? I didn't hear.
Yeah, I didn't hear.
Uh-uh. Not that I know of.
I was at a shooting Friday. I did a good shot. I have our director's school. Everybody's now trying to figure out the living game issue. And we know that he's in the game. It's just, it's final mile between Don Marsh and my brother. He's in the game. He's at R E L. So, we had a blow up of the laser. It's a bomb. Stay, huh? Actual cost, which is very, very near. But I got to do. We kept complicating it. And we had both schools. And there's far as in the team players. It was each side, you know, each one had their game. There was any now. We didn't allow it to get... If they bought a ticket, we gave them cash. It was pointless. But you want to allow them to stay? No. It's just a lot of trouble. I think I have to stay. That's not a good call. Are you gonna come down? That's wrong. The teacher thinking, "I'm still..."
I'd like to reconvene. School board meeting Monday, October 20, please. Board members, we could return to our seats.
7-1-6.
Oh, Ms. Fran. What's wrong? What's you? Say we start. Tell them we start. She in the back, family, right? That's all. She got it. Okay.
I got it.
She here. She in the room.
Ms. Gray, sir. All right.
Yes, we are ready, Ms. Fran.
I need the bottom to go to the van.
Colleagues.
I don't know.
Madam President.
Good evening, Mr. Coleman. Members of the school board, I appreciate your time. We will not belabor this. We wanted to come before you this afternoon to provide you with an update from the last time that we made a presentation in relationship to the Highland Grove project development. We wanted to make sure that you were informed as to where we are at this present time, what are the next stages of development, and also invite an opportunity for us to continue to have a more robust conversation and dialogue with the school board in the methodology and the process that you would like to see that done. We want to make sure that schools is engaged in every aspect of this conversation and that what we are in the process of redeveloping in the Highland Park community, that in no way the school board feels that they have not had a leading role in the decisions that are being made. So, we welcome this opportunity to come to you this afternoon. How you doing, Ms. Harris Mohammed? Thank you for the services that you're providing in the 6th District. And we look forward to continuing this ongoing relationship. I have been honored to serve on behalf of the council with the Facilities Task Force, and that has been a rewarding experience. I've learned a lot about schools. I've gone in school buildings that I've not been in before. I've seen things and have a hand. Eyes on appreciation for some of the concerns that you have raised and that you have brought to... That you have raised and continue to bring to the city's attention. And I will say to you that personally, it has tremendously impacted the degree of my priority and my commitment as it relates to the system and to the system needs in the years of neglect and the volume of work that needs to be done, both in facilities as well as academically. And so, I want to publicly say and pledge to you that I have always been a strong supporter of schools, and I intend to continue to be so. The Highland Grove project is moving along. We are behind schedule as it relates to the development, to the degree that we had hoped we would be by this time. Part of that is because we've gone back. We've listened to some of your concerns. We've looked at the master plan. We've looked at the land use. We've had several tours of the current building. We've gone back to the Omri. We've looked at that to see whether or not that provides an opportunity. But I will say to you, this whole development is the city's making a conscious and purposeful decision to address concentrated poverty in the city of Richmond and the impact that it's having on the city. We have already made the decision that this was gonna be one of the first public housing communities that we redevelop. All of the public housing in this community has been taken down. And we do have a plan that we've made a commitment to the citizens, to those residents that used to live there as it relates to the redevelopment of this community. Our commitment remains the same. We're gonna do 30% public housing, 30% workforce, and 30% market. We have already built 128 units, and I will say to you, of those 128 units, we have 131 school-aged children who have moved into the community within the last year. Within the last year, the overall population of the school has gone from an average of 350 to 450. At the current level of occupancy within the school, we are about 50 students short of our maximum capacity. We still have plans to build close to 150, 200 units of housing in the neighborhood moving forward. The next stage of development is the demolition of the Omri. That should be done before the end of this calendar year. And proceeding that, we hope to build, with your support, a new school with a community resource center that will be a beacon of attracting families and parents to be engaged in their children's lives. A lot of what we're doing with the center that will be built as a part of the school is really putting the child first. And one of the things that the Facility Task Force, you will see when this... When they make their full presentation, and we've had lots of discussion, Ms. Larson and Ms. Gray, about community schools and where the city may have fallen short with what really is community schools and how we are consciously wanting to readdress that. So, we wanted to keep you informed tonight to let you know that we are in the process of hiring a master developer. And in order for us to move forward with that, we hopefully will be able to advertise for a master developer and begin the process of filling that duty and responsibility the first of the year. It is very important that we get a solid commitment and confirmation from the school board as it relates to the school itself, the programming, as well as the additional services that would augment and support the school and the community center. So, we wanted tonight to bring you up to date as to where we are, but to also to emphasize the importance of us moving forward when trying to make this decision, affirm up this decision so that we can stay on schedule as it relates to the hiring of the master developer and moving forward. The demolition is already scheduled, and that will take place. But hiring the master developer and knowing exactly what we want to have on the site. Now, we have had a developer who's developed 128 units that are already in place, and that was phase one. We decided at that time that we needed to come back and revisit the design and so forth for the school. That's the reason why we're going back out for a master developer for the site. With that, I'm going to... I'd like to say that we heard your comments and your concerns as to why this building, being only 40 years old, and compares to some of our buildings that are close to 100 years old, why should we consider this? It's a part of the total redevelopment strategy. As you very well know, the building does not have walls that goes to the ceiling. We're actually having to transfer students out of the building at the times when we need to do testing because of too much noise and so forth. Some parents don't even want their kids to go to the school because of the noise. There are other major repairs that needs to be done on the building as well. In addition to that, it's built over a sewer line. And so, we've had some assessments of that, and I'll let Dr. Grant, if you will... Mr., I'm sorry. As it relates to the walkthrough and what we observe as far as the condition and the cost for renovation.
Yes, ma'am. We've taken a number of tours of Overby Shepherd. Overby Shepherd is our 10th youngest school. So, even at 40 years of age, relatively speaking, amongst the district, it's our 10th youngest. There's two schools within our system that were built as open airs, Henderson Middle School and Overby Shepherd Elementary. And as open airs, they do not have the walls. And there may be one or two others, but they don't have the walls that were built inside there. As such, as those buildings get to capacity, it creates lots of noise issues and acoustical issues with inside that building. Ms. Robertson said there also is water there that when we have serious rains, the drainage that takes place, we actually have water that seeps up into the gym from the bottom up, which obviously gives us... Tells us that we have a crack with inside the foundation. For us to get to that point and actually repair that, you can imagine the work that that will take and the expense. So with those issues, that if you take an Overby Shepherd and you bring it into a normal, traditional school, plus addressing the drainage issue that we have there with heavy rains, and I think Ms. Larson, you had an opportunity one time to see some of the sandbags that we have to put at one of the corners, we're probably looking close to $15 to $18 million because the only thing that we can maintain there would be parts of the outer wall, basically tear everything up in the inside and then rebuild the inside of the school. And then to expand it to additional capacity, it's about $250,000 a classroom. So depending on the number of elementary students the committee and the board is comfortable with, you can see what the total projections would be for an Overby Shepherd if we go and renovate it as well as get to a point from a rightsizing standpoint with that number, maybe.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I also have Mark Olender with me here from the city. I think he has passed out a copy of the presentation for your review. And I would just ask him to be available to answer any questions or any highlights as it relates to the timeline, Mark, that I did not capture.
Mark Olender, Director of Planning and Development Review. Pleasure to be here with you all tonight. I passed out the study that we engaged VMDO, the architects who did Broad Rock and Oak Grove, to help us do a test fit of the site at the end of last year to see if we could meet the requirements for student body, the community spaces that the councilwoman talked to, get the building off of the 48-inch CSO sewer line that runs presently under Overby Shepherd, and put the building at the center of the new Dove Street neighborhood. So what you see there are the recommendations and the final plan set done by VMDO at a conceptual level that meets the 650-student ratio, creates everybody within a quarter-mile walking distance in the new neighborhood for walkability purposes, provides enhanced green space and athletic fields for the residents of the new neighborhood and the larger neighborhood, and we believe comes in at the budget that's in the capital, comes in at the number in the capital budget that presently exists. We chose Broad Rock because of its character, by its ability to fit the site, a rather tight urban site, and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. But the idea was, as we mentioned last year when we were here, put the school in the center of the neighborhood, not on the edge of the neighborhood, and really give the 100-plus children who are in the neighborhood now the best opportunity for a great education and for those who are yet to come, the best opportunity for a great education. Thank you.
I just have a question around the design and because we're having a lot of issues with dead space, heating and cooling, and how we're cleaning ceilings and windows and replacing light bulbs and things because the very high, high-ceiling designs and the flat roof designs and those things. So are we talking about...
There's not, from the administration standpoint, there's not a commitment to the actual final design. Broad Rock, if you look at Broad Rock and Oak Grove, they both have the basic same as far as the number of classrooms, the type of labs, the number of teacher stations, the amount of the cafeteria. All that's there. Exactly how it would configure on that piece of property would still is open. That's just a starting point, but it's probably not the one. From going three stories, we probably would be avoiding multiple-story buildings as much as we possibly can. Also, you know, to change it as far as the cafeteria, where we don't have as much open space, redesigning some of that wouldn't be a major, major issue. But we'll address those issues working with the city on the final design.
Ms. Muhammad?
Mr. Krantz, what is your recommendation?
You really are going to flip me on the slide tonight? Okay, let me, let me, let me say, let me say this. Since the Facilities Committee is not complete, I think it would be premature for me to give one school a recommendation without the whole district so y'all can best prioritize what the needs of the districts are. I will say this, that Overby Shepherd, even though it is the 10th youngest school, it probably is one of our schools that has the most struggles from a facility standpoint because of the open air and the educational experience that those children can receive inside that building. And then because of the drainage situation that we do have there, that is causing some significant problems with inside that gym. But, and you know, I don't mind answering the questions that y'all pose, but I will say I like to defer until we can give you the complete. But I, but I would think this would be one that there would be a recommendation to make some changes there. Okay.
Ms. Larson?
Thank you for coming here tonight and thank you for your involvement on the Facilities Task Force. It's been great to have you at the table for those discussions. I, I guess what Mr. Krantz just said is kind of where I am too, and that's where I've been. And I've talked about it publicly and talked about it with you, Councilwoman, since I heard about this project over a year ago, is we have 44 schools and this one project, and that's really all we have right now in addition to our priority needs, which are basically emergency issues that are coming up in our schools. So I have a really hard time figuring out why this one is at the top of the list when we haven't looked at all of them. Henderson has the open-air model. Francis has the open-air model. You know, we have other kids who are in those situations dealing with the same. I mean, it's, it's an awful layout. I agree with you. I don't think we should have them in any of our schools, but I, I have some concerns about this school being picked. And as a School Board member, I need to look at it globally. The current repairs, as I understand, total about, take out the, the open-air issue, total about 1.5 or something. There's a drainage and maybe...
There's a drainage, we'll be dealing with the roof issue. We had some mechanical issues. So yeah, 1.5 would be a fairly reasonable number.
And, and then I guess my last issue is just that I think the, the time is right now for the school system to take ownerships, ownership of building these buildings. We know what we need. We have seen the challenges in some of the newer buildings. And it's not to say we don't appreciate the new buildings, but if you're, if you're buying a piece of land, if you're building a house, then you want to live in it. And, you know, you build the house, you know all the quirks, you know all that, and that's how it is on day one. And I feel like the School Board is in a, and this whole school system is in a much different place than it was a couple of years ago. And I think...
15 seconds.
Oh goodness, I forgot what time. And I, I just think we're in a place where we need to, to seriously consider that, taking back the school construction.
And Ms. Larson, I wouldn't disagree with you because we're in the buildings every day, but let me say that there is a strong spirit of cooperation today between the city and the school system. A perfect example of that was changes that we've expressed a desire to make to a school that's under construction, that we worked out all the details today inside a fairly lengthy meeting. And the school system received everything that it was asking for. And so I'm seeing, and I mean, I know with the proof's in the pudding. I know I wasn't here prior to May, and I don't have all the history, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to anyone if I, if I am. But I have seen, since I've been here, there is a true spirit of cooperation between the city and the school system. And I see us having a strong voice. And like you said, I'd love to control the construction projects. And I've done it, I have no problem with that. But I do see a spirit, a strong spirit of cooperation between our parties that maybe wasn't there in the past.
Mr. Coleman, I would just like to say in regards to, and I appreciate that, it's been a pleasure working with your staff. It's been my pleasure serving on the Facilities Task Force. I've been extremely encouraged by what I've learned there. But I've been very encouraged as it relates to things that I see that the School Board and your staff is doing as it relates to the curriculum, education, academics, and so forth. So I, I do think that, you know, there's, it's a new day. I think it's opportunity for us to continue to come to the table together and have discussions. I recognize the fact that the School Board has this challenge as it relates to, you know, you've got an array of buildings that need work done to them, and, and we need an ongoing sound maintenance. We need to get to maintenance and maintain. And there are some critical decisions that are being made. I wanted to present to you tonight so that we would know where we are. I think based on what my understanding is as it relates to when the facility study will be coming before us, would be time enough for us to make decisions as it relates to the scope of work for advertisement for the master developer. However, if we need information prior to that, we will come to the appropriate person to make sure that we are doing what needs to be done to put that advertisement out there so that the master developer have a good sense of what is possible and how, how the site is going to be laid out. But I think the recommendations from the Facilities Task Force is in order, and I think that we should certainly evaluate those and include those as a part of this discussion. The only difference with this development is the fact that it is a development. We've, we've made $28 million investment already in this master plan. We have built a third of this community already. It is, it is in front of the development plan and, and process that we are looking at beginning the process of really putting, breaking ground in Creighton. We are halfway in the middle of development, and the school is, is a beacon. It's a beacon of the community. It always has been from the master planning from the very beginning of the day. And I, I do, would like to just ask that the residents that have taken the time to come down tonight, if we could just allow them to stand and be acknowledged, that would be helpful for those that are here to support the development in the Holland Park community. And I want to thank them for coming down. Appreciate that very much. And if there are any other questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them. They are not all residents of the community. And just in case some of you are concerned that Mr. Price does not live in the 6th District, Mr. Price is responsible for building the Cannon Creek Trail that supports our, our community school. And he's an honorary citizen, and, and, and some of our people are always stakeholders. We, we, none of us do this stuff by ourselves. So we appreciate your time. There are special papers before the legis, before our body that look at additional funding as a source of continued revenue for schools. And we'll be more than happy to come back and have more detailed presentation on that as well. Thank you.
Okay, you got one more question, Ms. Taylor?
I'm sorry.
The 130 some odd students that you have that live in the development for the states that you've already developed, how many of those are elementary students? Or are they all elementarys?
No, of the 130, there are 78 that are school-aged children, not necessarily elementary. About, I would say 50 of those. I'll give you the exact numbers. We were able to get that from the resident manager, about 50 of those. And of that 50, some of those kids are three years old, so they're not of age, but they will be of age within the next year too. Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you so much, and we will be in touch.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Okay.
The next item is 4.03. Receive a report from the Exceptional Education Advisory Committee.
And just before that, Mr. Mason, welcome sir. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, and Mr. West Bay. We're coming before you this evening to present an annual update from the Special Education Advisory Committee to the School Board. Part of the process that the Virginia Department of Education has outlined, we are working collaboratively with parents of students with disabilities, with community representatives that have support and have a passion about improving the educational system for students with disabilities. And so we have a diverse group for Richmond's Special Education Advisory Committee. And that group is going to share with you some of the recommendations that they have for us moving forward. Some of the work conducted from the 2014, 13, 14 school year. And you may have reviewed the information in your Friday report. So we are just going to provide a high-level overview for you this, this evening. If you have any questions, please do feel free. So with me this evening, we have Ms. Paula Edget, who is new to RPS. She is a Compliance Coordinator in the Office of Exceptional Education and Student Services. And we also have Ms. Christine Muse, who is an RPS teacher who also is providing leadership for the Richmond Special Education Advisory Committee. And these two young ladies will be presenting to you this night.
Well, we're just going to go over the presentation quickly. So I know you've seen it before. The roles and responsibilities of the CAC Committee. We, we work to identify the needs of students with disabilities, develop advice and recommendations for the division. We try to consider issues at a division-wide level as opposed to case-by-case. And we work collaboratively with the Department of Exceptional Ed. This is a list of our current membership. We're a pretty good mix of parents, community stakeholders, and the Department of Exceptional Education. This is our meeting schedule. It's a change from last year. We're going to be meeting the second Tuesday of every, of every other month at the Richmond Career Education and Employment Academy. And last school year for the 2013-14 Division, we identified three priorities. The Parent Resource Center, supporting students with autism spectrum disorders, and the impact of our reduction in force from the year prior. Specifically to the Parent Resource Center, obviously, this is a parent-driven group. And essentially, the parents and our service providers were concerned about the impact of losing the Parent Resource Center on parents' division-wide. And these were some of the questions that they developed regarding that impact. For our second priority, students with autism spectrum disorders. For Richmond Public Schools, we've seen a 61% increase from 2010 to 2014 in the number of students identified with autism spectrum disorders. We have a chart that shows that, that increase, and it's pretty in line with the state trend, which was a 74% increase. And then over the last decade, we've had a 356% increase in the number of students with autism spectrum disorders that are identified in the Richmond School Division, or in the state, I guess. Because of that sharp increase, the committee is concerned just about staff knowledge, both exceptional education staff members and general education staff members, as well as our administrators. And we're particularly concerned about the student outcomes as a result of their transition through school and after high school, and their achievement in the classroom. Our third area priority was the reduction in force. And I'm sure you all are familiar with this, but the positions that were eliminated were the two Parent Resource Center positions, one instructional specialist position, and a transition mentor/teacher position, all from the Exceptional Ed Department. Our accomplishments over the last year, we wrote a letter of support for a sub-grant application for the Parent Resource Center. application for the Parent Resource Center, and that was, that we ended up receiving. We also wrote a letter of support for the proposed budget. We also requested transition training for parents of students with disabilities, as many of our parents and other parents throughout the Division indicated that that was an area of concern, and the School Division, the Exceptional Ed Department came forward with those trainings, and we had them in the spring of 2014. Our recommendations going forward, we'd love to see the key, those key staff positions We also had recommendations regarding professional development for students, for staff that serve students with autism spectrum disorders, General Education staff as well as special or Exceptional Education staff. Those were some of our other recommendations. The last one, revise the train, the trainer model. We've invested a lot of money or time in putting teachers through trainings to enhance their knowledge of how to work with students with autism spectrum disorders, and so we'd love to see a model in place to take those resources that we've developed internally and spread them out over the rest of the School Division. Two other recommendations, funding for a peers group for middle school students, we'd like to expand that, and then allocating funding for school-based trainers to provide that ongoing professional development and technical assistance. And we just want to thank you all for your continued support of students with disabilities in Richmond Public Schools, we appreciate it.
And before Ms. Muse sits down, I do want to take this moment to thank Ms. Muse and the Special Education Advisory Committee, you know, all of our parents, community representatives, they work all day, they have children, they have parents that they have to care for, and so they really do take time out of their evenings. Sometimes you have to run home, pick up the kids, drop the kids off, figure out how to get dinner, and they really are committed to this work, and so we truly appreciate all that they've done. I know Ms. Edget has spoke very, very highly of the team since she's come on board, because it's rare that you have a really invested group, and so we're small, we still do seek to grow, but we're very appreciative of the CAC and the work that they've done today, and I'm confident that with us partnering together, we're going to do much more.
Here's a question, Ms.
Are the dollars that are attached to those FTEs somewhere so that we can include that in our budget discussions?
We will be bringing that forward, and those things, again, were pulled from our most recent reduction in force, but we will be putting that forward in our upcoming budget discussions this year.
And do we have any Spanish-speaking special ed coordinators, parent resource folks right now?
Not presently, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Born, thank you, this is just a quick logistical question. Can you all get this electronically to Angie so that we can post it in our board docs? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is 4.04, receive and affirm the 2014 graduates and 2014 summer school graduates. I believe that list was sent to you in a Friday report, and it is, excuse me, also on board docs.
And then Dr. Richardson is present, if you have any questions of him.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. You should have in your packets this evening the graduation list, composite list for the 2013-14 school year and summer 2014 graduates. This is a comprehensive list, which includes graduates from our specialty high schools as well as our comprehensive high schools who've earned a, who've met the School Board requirements for earning an advanced, standard, modified, special, or general education diploma or certificate of completion. The total number of graduates from the spring and summer of 2014 is 1,208, which is slightly down seven from total graduates last year. Just to make it clear, this is just to count for each year, just one data point in time, doesn't necessarily correlate to the on-time graduation rate, so we're just talking about the graduates for each year. And I just want to give you some highlights from each of the schools. Thomas Jefferson had 211 total graduates, down of about 11 graduates from last year. John Marshall had 185 graduates, down 26 graduates. George Wiff, 187, down 20. Armstrong had 222 total graduates, down 14. Huguenot, 254 total graduates, up 17 graduates from last year. Open High, about 50 graduates, up 14 from last year. Richmond Community, about 60, up five from last year. And Franklin, 27 total graduates, down about 10. And Amity Street School had two graduates this past school year. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Harris Muhammad, I believe it was in a Friday report about a week or two ago, and then it was posted to board docs earlier today. Mm-hmm.
All right. Yeah, do we need a motion to receive this?
You need a motion to affirm it.
To affirm it.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Sturdervant, seconded by Mr. Born. Did you want a roll call, both Mr. Chair or just a?
Hey, go ahead, do a roll call.
Mr. Sturdervant, Ms. Gray, Mr. Born, Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Harris Muhammad, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Larson, Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Motion passes eight, zero. The next item on the agenda is 4.05, receive a response to the workers' compensation audit.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the, in your packet was included a final version of the management response to the workers' comp audit that the city auditor, internal auditor presented a few weeks ago, and we, I'd say the biggest highlight would be, in some cases, because of the nature of workers' compensation, which is not the same as health care, we're bound by law to take certain actions, we don't have the choice to make the call on the type of health care that the doctors choose to administer. We have panels of doctors that are chosen that we can direct the employees to see, but in emergency or any kind of another event, then the employee is free to seek whatever kind of care they need to at that moment, and we have no say in it by law. So that's kind of the gist of our response to some of the recommendations that were made here. Many we do agree with, and we will comply with, and this report, along with the other two reports, have been most recently done, there's going to be an audit committee meeting November 18th, and we will be present for that, and the report's filed with the internal auditor for that, so I'll leave it at that unless you have specific questions on this report.
And also colleagues, the point of information today, me and Ms. Larson met with Councilman Samuels about the audits and our connecting and better communication with that, and everything seems to be moving in the right direction. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Gray.
Well, Glenn and I met last week with the city auditors, and we have a list of outstanding items that we were planning to present to the administration, we're going to email you, because we've been kind of not been kept in the loop lately. I know you all took over some of the communications piece, but we are trying to avoid getting letters and surprises from the audit committee for the city, because we've really been working hard to be as cooperative as possible, so we inserted ourselves back in to the loop, and we have a list of outstanding items that the city auditor is requesting, so we'll send you that list.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Ms. Larson.
Looking at the responses, on the one that talks about the recommendation, the school need, School Board needs to amend the sick leave policy that permits sick leave to supplement workers' comp payments to cap total payments to pre-injury net compensation, the action, the administration did not agree, but says RPS agrees to research what all other school systems are doing in relation to sick leave policy and workmen's comp to provide, School Board to review. Okay. Is there any way we could get that folded into our budget process?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Many of these things were put on hold mainly because of the turnover staff we've had, the hirings, and the delayed, and with all the interviews and hiring, that was really the primary reason, it wasn't a lack of interest or emphasis on the importance of these reports and our responses to them, so that's what we're assuring them, and we're on board with our responses. At this point, we'll have a complete review of all of the audits that have been done to date, and all the items are outstanding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westbay.
Thank you.
The next item is 4.06, receive the truancy audit.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, Mr. Westbay, on October 3rd, internal audit released the audit report on the transition of the truancy program from the City of Richmond to Richmond Public Schools. In that report, our observations are, the school district needs additional funding for vehicles for the truancy staff, the salary and benefits budget needs adjustment based on the hiring of some employees hired and the salaries that was budgeted for, a memorandum of understanding with the city for the disposal of student records is needed, and a plan for, to process outcome evaluation is needed by administration. The highlight of the audit report is the vehicles received by the school district. Pictures were included in the audit report, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Ms. Muhammad?
If you can go over what you just indicated and what you found, please, I was trying to get it. You don't have it.
No, okay. Audit finding number one was for administration to acquire additional vehicles for staff to use in the performance of their duties. Five vehicles were transferred to the school district from the city. Based on the appearance of those vehicles, internal audit requested First Vehicle Services to perform a diagnostic on each one of the vehicles, and based on that diagnosis, if you were, turn to page four of the audit report, you will see pictures of the automobiles, First Vehicle Services' assessment of those vehicles, and based on those assessments, the school district or the administration determined that none of those vehicles will be used in the truancy program. Recommendation number two is for the administration to, excuse me, is for the administration to review the budget for the truancy program and make the necessary adjustments to the budget to ensure that the budget will not be exceeded. When we looked at the budget presented by the administration in June and tracked the actual salaries of the employees hired, those salaries exceeded what was in the budget in some categories, and so we made a recommendation to administration to review the salary and benefit budget and to adjust that budget, and to come to the, to the school district, to the School Board if need to be, to make those adjustments. Recommendation number three was for the superintendent to negotiate an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the city for the return and disposal of student records. All of the records that were generated by the city are still with the city, and they need to be disposed of properly. And recommendation number four was for administration to develop an evaluation plan for the truancy program, to look at the outcomes wanted, program components that will help achieve the goals, and the types of data that would be collected and the data collection methods.
Mr. Born, the audit covered a period when we were bringing that back in-house, and so the one that really concerns me right now is the finding that we have not requested those student records back, and I think given the last couple of weeks of news and unfortunate incidents here at RPS with respect to student records, have we done that yet? Have we requested those records come back to us, or asked that they be destroyed, demanded they be destroyed?
Yes, good evening. Yes, our School Board attorney requested, sent out a notice to the city attorney and requested evidence that either the records have been destroyed or are planned to move on an MOU to have those records destroyed. We did receive the paper copies, it's the electronic copies that we haven't.
And have we received a response from them?
I have not been given a response yet.
When did we send the request?
It was last week, but I'd have to check.
Last week?
It was last week.
Okay, that, that really concerns me. It's, you know, we up and running had it since summer, I guess, and so student records are obviously one of the things that we need to keep our most safe and most secure, obviously. And so my hope is that the next time we get together, when is our next meeting, November 3rd? Hopefully the city will have responded and demonstrated to us that they've destroyed them or sent us back a bunch of boxes of records, because I don't think that we can run the risk of not pushing this as hard and as fast and as forcefully as we can. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Larson.
When we were talking about whether or not to transfer this for this year, it seemed like the administration, yourself, really wanted to move forward with it, felt like it was a good plan, I was excited about the plan, but, you know, the School Board wanted to do this audit just to see where the assets were, and, I mean, is it what you expected, or are we really struggling? I mean, where, where are you today? I personally, when I looked at the actual assets, I was disappointed, and, you know, I'm concerned that you don't have enough cars to get around, and you can't be as responsive as you should be.
Absolutely, and I, we do have a concern about the number of cars, and because we are not fully staffed, and we have, the Transportation Department has pulled a couple of cars from other resources to support us as we try to get through this particular hurdle, but I do have a concern that we do not have enough cars to respond, in some cases we're doubling up, and being very, very coordinated and sometimes dropping one staff member off at a school and then going to do some home visits and swinging back through to pick them up. So, but we are grateful that the Department of Transportation has found us a couple of older cars to work with.
Okay, so ideally, how many more vehicles would you need to be where you need to be?
Not counting the ones that we are borrowing, okay, we need eight more cars, once we're fully staffed.
To piggyback on Ms. Larson's comment about the assets that we got, we basically got, I don't know how many cars they were, but they were old, broken down, and useless from a driving standpoint, and very useless from a truancy standpoint. And that's the concern for me, is, so we got some assets, we got some vehicles, but now we need to go and get more vehicles to do the job that the ones that the city gave us are not using. us are not useful for. So, I agree with what has been said, but I guess the other issue for me is, how do we prevent things like that from happening in the future, where we have an agreement with the city and expectations are one thing, but the reality of what we end up getting is another? And I, that's really more of a rhetorical question, I don't expect you to have an answer to that. But I think that's just, that's, with some of the other things that are on the agenda tonight, that was kind of the underlying concern for me, and it's a concern here. I just think we need to look at that going forward, that, you know, we're not getting sold a bill of goods at the end of the day.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
You said, when you're fully staffed, how many additional employees do you need? And also, is there a liability with employees using their own vehicles and getting reimbursed for gas and mileage? Is that even, even an option?
Well, to answer your first question, we are, from our original plan, we are short four full-time attendance officers. And we are having to scale back in order, due to the budget issues that were highlighted in the audit. The second question was about using the, personal vehicles.
Parents and knowledge.
I, I think that would, I'm not sure that I'm equipped to answer that question. There is a lot of mileage and a lot, and transporting children and using them in official truancy sweeps, and I do think that, I think, in my opinion, that's a tremendous liability, but I can't answer the legal question behind that. Oh.
I'd just like to bring to the table that I believe your policy, if I'm not mistaken, expressly prohibits your employees from transporting students in their personal vehicles as it states, as it stated today. And I think that any discussion to change that policy, we would have to look at conditional cars, insurance on the cars, those types of things that we want to regulate, or that we can regulate as a district if they're our own vehicles versus the personal vehicles of others. But your policy states that they're not to transport students in their personal vehicles.
Is all the need is so much around transporting students, not to do administrative work go from one to go to the other in that call? And do you have workers who are not always going out to the students?
Oh.
That apply, personal vehicles apply?
Sure. So, every day is not predictable, and every employee is expected to be available to answer a truancy call. So, we are, so they may be out in, doing a home visit, and we get a call on the hotline. And if it's in the area that you're in, we're gonna call the person that's in that area to respond to that community call. So, it could, it's not easy to predict who is gonna be on the call. So, you know, today, we had, at some point in time, almost everyone was transporting a person at some point during the day.
That's great.
So, as far as the policy goes with transporting students, I mean, it happens in other organizations where people are reimbursed a mileage rate, and when we have fleet challenges, that's, that's what happens in service organizations. And I think the intent of our policy is so that we don't just have people willy-nilly running around throwing kids in their car and getting accidents, and we take on a huge liability. But, you know, I've worked in service industries where I've transported adults and children in my car, done home visiting. And there were certain, as a state employee, there were certain requirements for liability insurance and things like that, that I had to do in order to make that happen. So, I think that it is something that maybe we should look at, the possibility of doing when we're in emergency situations. And I think we are in a pretty desperate circumstance right now. But specifically outlining what the purpose of, of changing that policy is and the parameters, so that we don't just have folks saying, oh, it's wide open now, we can throw kids in the car and take them anywhere. But for the purposes of maintaining our legal requirements for truancy, I think we should explore personal vehicles in the meantime, until we can get budgeted for those fleet vehicles.
Mr. Westbay just did some math calculations here to give us a general idea of cost.
Probably before we would go down that path, at 56 cents a mile and 100 miles a day, eight vehicles for 180 days for one school year, that's $80,000. So, I would suggest we probably ought to consider looking at used vehicles. We could probably get eight vehicles for that price. If we had $80,000.
All right.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item is 4.07, receive and approve the draft constituent services policy.
Ms. Lilly, could you just speak, please?
The policy before you for consideration tonight is the new proposed policy 1-5.7, constituent services. As board members may recall, and other board members may even want to chime in, I guess this was birthed out of your governance training a little bit ago, that the superintendent was, and I were tasked with developing a policy that would fit your division as a result of looking at several other drafts that were presented to you that particular night. So, the constituent services policy is a policy that is not unusual to school divisions. I would like to just put that out for the record. But this is the draft policy that is in line with some of the features of some of the policies that were included in the package during the governance training session, as well as recommendations from the superintendent as well. I did receive between, this is the second reading of the policy, between the first read and the second read, I did receive a change from, oh, I'm, excuse me, before the first reading of the policy, because this was presented to you as a other informational item prior to the first read. So, between the other informational item and the first reading of this, there was a revision that was included from your colleague, Ms. Epps. It was just a formatting issue to kind of rearrange some things for flow. But other than that, there were no other revisions suggested or questions raised regarding the policy to date.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
To me, I would add.
I would like to get a consensus to continue this until our next meeting, and if Ms. Lilly could give us a timeframe that we can send in additional recommendations after further review.
Ms. Taylor, any specific concerns?
Not that I can articulate at this moment, but I was, I will say that I was very consumed with reviewing the Armstrong-Crayton Court project, to have a chance to truly dissect it. What I would like to have the opportunity to do, to do is to compare it between what is already in place, the recommendation that Ms. Pinkney-Epps put forward as far as the formatting, and just be able to dissect it as it is. One of my concerns is that we already have policy in place that speaks to the school board directing our constituency to, or people in general, to the superintendent. And I just want to make sure that we're not redundant, and also see how it specifically speaks to our relationship with our constituency on a district basis.
Okay. Colleagues, this is my request from Ms. Taylor to move this to the next meeting.
Agreed.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any disagreement? Okay, Madam Clerk, let that, this will be on the next agenda.
Thank you.
And Ms. Taylor? Start to talk with Ms. Lilly about the specifics, okay?
Could I provide a date as requested? I would like to have, this is, any changes or requests or revisions or questions regarding this, so that we can formulate the draft for, for the board packets. Could I have them by Monday, October 27?
That's the next thing, I don't know what's going on.
Correct.
Can we bring them?
Sure. So, Monday, October 27?
The next meeting is the third.
Correct. But we have to give them in the board packets to you prior to the third.
Next item is 4.08, discuss zero-based budget and check register process.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, board members, we're gonna do a little overview here. I guess we can dim the lights up there for a couple minutes. Is it already up there? Yeah. And under departments, either under budget or finance, right here, the Richmond Department Budget and Financial, Richmond Schools Check Registry, it's on both sites. So, you click there, and then you start your search, and it opens up a window that you can search by any number of ways, say all, and it'll give you everything from the beginning of the year, and then you can begin searching and filtering, saving the data out to Excel if you choose to. It gives you the vendor name, the date of the check, the check amount, the invoice description, a fund code, the first digit of the function code, the object code, if somebody wants to look at the expenditures in that fashion. And then you can choose to begin filtering or, or search on a specific letter of the alphabet. And if you choose to search, then, and this will give you the definition codes and legends, this will tell you, like, fund codes. So, if you click on that, then here are all the funds and the descriptions, so that you know what these codes over here on the right mean, gives you the definitions of them. And click to function codes. These are the major categories that the board appropriates money by, as governed by the state, that the city council can appropriate monies to the school board by. And then here are the major objects of expenditures, what did we spend the money? A function being, why did we spend the money? Instruction, maintenance, transportation. And the funds are the legal restrictions of how we spend money based on that type of view. And then you can take anything you want, you can search for just certain codes and certain vendors, certain date ranges, you can slice it six ways from Sunday, basically. And like I said, once you get a view, you can say, export it out to a spreadsheet. And I'll cancel that, won't take the time to do it. But in a nutshell, that's it. Again, the staff of Ms. Payne from Finance, and Nishan Lee, the Accounts Payable Accounting Manager, Mr. Gardner with Iktas, and Dion Gray, I think was one of the primary programmers on it, Nicole Stewart. And they did a phenomenal job of putting this together, so. One of the nicest ones I've seen on many of the sites I've been to, and looking at them. Everybody's moving on the transparency bandwagon these days all over the country, but, and I've looked at quite a few, and I haven't seen any that are quite as slick as this one is. But hey, I'm not biased either, huh? Okay, so that's it, unless you have questions or?
Mr. Stowe?
I just wanted to say thanks. It really is very well done to you and your team for all the hard work of making that happen. It's a, it is phenomenally well done, and so, thank you all for, for making that happen.
Thank you. Okay. To the right. Nope, wrong one. We got it up here. We got this. Where is it? I don't know. Did I close it? Maybe I closed it.
I think you did, Ralph.
No, it's hard to see. We'll go ahead and dim the lights again.
Which one was it?
Yeah. There we go. Okay, and I have Ms. Betsy Drury here, Director of Budget and Planning, and she put this PowerPoint together, and we reviewed, to give you an update of where we are, on what our plan is for this year, the gist of it is, we're not gonna do the full zero-based budgeting this year, we just don't have the time to do it. Part, most of that was dependent upon the timing of hiring the staff and getting them onboard. She just came onboard a little more than a month ago and spent her first 30 days meeting a milestone, a big one. We've got our annual comprehensive, annual score report that's due to the State Department by September 30th of each year, and we did file that on time, but that consumed all of her first 30 days onboard, basically. So, we're now turning our attention to the budget side, and with that, we're going to still implement a modified version of it this year, a comprehensive process, so we're gonna hit a few quick milestones. So, in zero-based budgeting, it factors in the strategic goals. That's one of the key foundations of the process, is that you tie your budget to your strategic goals. So, we need to begin that, we're gonna have some educating going on this year. There are several factors that we need to plan for, for next year, as we prepare during '15, '16, for the '17 budget. And it's gonna take us this much time between now and then to get to that point in training with the leadership of the division. It assesses the program activities against statutory responsibilities, purpose, cost to provide the service, and expected out, performance outcomes. There has to be an extensive collaboration between the organizational leaders and the budget office and the department heads to accomplish this. A modified CBB is recommended for this reason, mainly because of our, the new leadership, the extensive amount of, there's not a lot of institutional knowledge left here at this point in time, and a lot of people don't even know what's in their current budget. So, we're gonna spend this year with an education process on that, which will give us a better foundation to begin this process for the following year, as we phase into it. So.
But I gotta pay to get back.
But they'll review the effectiveness of the programs for this coming year, in determining whether those are contributing to their success or not. They'll have the time to go through what we do have and understand exactly what is in the budget at this point, and also identify any unmet needs, just as Dr. Boyd was presenting part of that as an example earlier tonight in her presentation. And also, Ms. Jones, we've also, we already know we have an unmet need in the truancy transition program for next year. We do know that much. For training, sufficient time is needed to train the staff and organizational leaders in how to best match the resources to the goals and the organizational mission. So, our plan is to establish a three-year history of spending, present that, review it with the, the leadership, review areas of overspending, and evaluate the causes and opportunities for improvement, an honest assessment about whether long-term programs are contributing to. But they'll review the effectiveness of the programs for this coming year in determining whether those are contributing to their success or not. They'll have the time to go through what we do have and understand exactly what is in the budget at this point, and also identify any unmet needs, just as Dr. Boyd was presenting part of that as an example earlier tonight in her presentation. And also, Ms. Jones, we've also, we already know we have an unmet need in the truancy transition program for next year. We do know that much. For training, sufficient time is needed to train the staff and organizational leaders in how to best match the resources to the goals and the organizational mission. So our plan is to establish a three-year history of spending, present that, review it with the leadership, review areas of overspending and evaluate the causes and opportunities for improvement, an honest assessment about whether long-term programs are contributing to student success, challenge the leadership to find two areas where increased efficiencies or reduced spending can be realized to shift the dollars to areas that have greater impact, and then ask the staff to identify any unmet needs in their schools and departments and have them provide the details on how meeting those needs will contribute to student success or how existing resources can be redirected. Review the student allocations for reasonableness. We've probably had the same allocation plans partly mandated by the circumstances of a great recession in '08, but to revisit those and then plan for expanded initiatives and revised operations along different program areas and all the main things that we've talked about and that you've reviewed before, the major initiatives that we need to address and going forward to '16. Compensation study, we're embarking on right now. The firm's committed by starting this week that they'll have a product for us that can be used as par input into the process for next year in late December, early January. Review all revenues, determine if they're appropriately budgeted at reasonable collection levels. That's an analysis that we're working on right now for this year. Full implementation with the 2016, '17 budgets and with training occurring during this year, so, so, working on it this year with the goal of full implementation for next year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Westbay?
Thanks, Mr. Westbay. The compensation study, I didn't under, I think I just missed it for a second. What is that going to do?
It's going to be a complete evaluation of all the positions in the division with a recommendation for a unified compensation plan for all support positions, all non-teaching positions. Will be recommended to be placed on a unified compensation plan with a market study. It'll include a market study comparing us to our, we'll see where we are, not both externally from a competitive standpoint and internally from an equity standpoint.
Gotcha.
With recommendation to include the teacher salary scale as well.
Okay. And the, I liked how, just given personnel and time constraints, you all have come up with a proposed alternative for the modified zero-based budget this year of finding two areas of efficiencies and directing that to better target areas where they'll have larger impact. Is there, is there a reasonable goal? And I, you may be, to a certain extent, picking a number out of the air, but based on what you all have, you know and you've looked at, is there a reasonable, achievable goal that we can say, okay, they can find 10 million in efficiencies that can be directed elsewhere, or 5 million, or 100,000, or?
I think it would be pretty difficult to put a number on that we'd want to. Yeah, I'd hate to hazard the number at this point. That's all I'd be doing.
It will vary depending on the size of that department's or that organization's operations. The larger areas, obviously, there's more opportunity. But 85% of our budget, of course, is salaries and benefits, so there is more of a limited opportunity in non-salary initiatives, but they are there. We just need to work with the new leadership to identify the areas. And it is a good opportunity with new leadership, someone coming in with a fresh perspective that might be willing to take a risk that someone embedded in a process that has been going on for 15 years might be reluctant to undertake.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
I did, I'm sorry.
Ms. Mohammed?
If, Mr. Westbay, I know that the superintendent is not here, but I noticed that we had a program that is, I guess, up for renewal, it's back on the Budget List Interactive Achievement. If there are additional programs that, let's say the State Department is requiring us to use, like ARDT or something like that because of our focus of priority schools, can you all just make sure you communicate through the chair to us in a timely fashion so we'll know the cost and things like, because they're coming down the pipe? So I just want us to be proactive about the cost. And some things are not going to be negotiable.
Yes.
If you can get that from him so we can know, that'd be great. Because that's going to be a budgetorial concern.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is 4.09, receive school board travel and district activity request. I have a couple of requests. Mrs. Larson is requesting to attend the Parliamentary Procedure Early Bird Conference at the VSB Conference. The estimated cost for that is $161.39, which includes travel. Mrs. Harris Mohammed would like to be reimbursed for attending the NAACP Freedom Fund Gala and Award Program, which was on October 10th, at a cost of $50. I have given you a flyer from the REA on the VEA Instruction and Professional Development Conference. Ms. Harris Mohammed has requested to go to that. And Mrs. Larson also had submitted a request for newsletter. Were you able to get? Okay, and I don't have the figures for that, so I apologize. The VEA conference is $200.
Actually, it's 30. I'm a member.
You are, ma'am? Okay. Thank you. So then the cost is? $55. So what was that total, Ms. Harris Mohammed?
$200.
$200 for the ad?
It's 200, she said, what's the total?
The total for the ad and the ticket is $200.
$200.
Okay. So the change on the NAACP Freedom Fund for Ms. Harris Mohammed is a total of 200 and not the 50 that's there. At a future meeting, Ms. Taylor will be requesting to go to the NSBA Conference in March in Tennessee. We just don't have any figures for that yet.
Okay.
So are we just approving?
Yeah, we're just.
What's on here?
What's on, what's on the sheet?
Those items that are on there, but that have been modified, Mrs. Larson's, VSB, Ms. Harris Mohammed reimbursement for attending the NAACP program, and that changed from 50 to 200, and then Ms. Harris Mohammed's request to go to the VEA Instruction and Professional Development Conference for a total of $200.
Some of them.
We don't have any information or any figures. I just let them know that you have made the request and it will come forward at a later date.
Okay.
Mr. Stern, it made the motion. Dr. Jones, you second it? Mr. Stern? Ms. Gray? Mr. Born? Thank you. Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mohammed? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passed eight, zero.
Mr. Coleman?
Ms. Gray?
I just would like a copy of the ad. Is it for the, was it for the Chat and Chew series?
No, it's for the NAACP banquet, which is in the book, both in March, February. And the ad that I placed is in the book. Towards the back.
Okay. Okay. You can share that with her at some point, that's fine.
I just want to know if it was, I mean, because I just voted for it, but I want to make sure it's school-related. I mean, what kind of?
It was, they had a fundraiser towards their youth programs, towards, I don't know how to perform by the credit, but this particular gala honored one of our RPS students.
So I'm just curious what the ad said, if we're, what are we advertising?
I wasn't advertising anything, and I can read it to you all. "Merkelations, Richmond, Virginia Branch, NAACP on another successful Freedom Fund Gala and Awards Program. Your work is appreciated. Honorable Shonda Harris Mohammed, Richmond School Board, 6th District."
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, well, let me just say, I'm a little uncomfortable with, with us doing that, and we've just approved that, but I think we do need to look at what our policies are around paying for those types of publications. I think campaign funds are, you know, there for that purpose, but our public funds, I can't, I'm uneasy about.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gray. And again, I would say for all of us, this is our first year doing this, and so we expect that these kind of questions will come up, but as far as this ad goes, we've approved it. If it's, if we have concerns about it, let's talk with legal and see if there's any reason to have those concerns, and if we want to change something in our policy, we can move forward with that, but thank you.
Can I just add just one quick note? I just wanted to just add, just for the connection to education, this was an event that our superintendent was a keynote speaker of, and it was a great support in honor of him being there.
Okay, thank you so much. Clerk?
The next item is item five, the superintendent's report. 5.01, receive and approve the Human Resources Actions.
Okay, Mr. Billups?
Okay, School Board Chairman, Mr. Coleman, Vice Chair, Ms. Larson, School Board Members, good evening. I present to you these Human Resources Agenda tonight. Actions for approval include the termination of one employee, the nomination of 18 employees, the change of contract of 17 employees, and the transfer of nine employees. HR actions for information include the resignation of five employees, the retirement of one employee, the furlough of two employees, the rescission of employment of three employees, the reappointment of employment of one employee, and the change of name of one employee. And one additional addendum item that was presented this evening is another nomination for consideration.
Okay, and we do have some items for close?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Born?
Mr. Chairman, we were just handed an addendum, which is a fairly significant fill.
Right.
To the extent that this position works very closely with the school board, I would, I would move that we delay this until we can hear directly from Dr. Bedden about the qualification of skills, experience, and knowledge of this, the candidate.
Okay. So we definitely have items to speak about in close around the human resource agenda, so let's just move this on to close, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I was looking around. He's right here.
Okay, Mr. Westbay has something to add as the representative of the superintendent in his.
Only that he did ask us today, and Mr. Krantz sat in on their interview with this, with this particular candidate, and Dr. Bedden asked for Mr. Krantz to relate to you the very issues that you're addressing, if you're comfortable with that, that he asked him to speak to you in the session about that.
That would need to be enclosed because the person can be identified. Okay, thank you so much.
I don't think that there's, I mean, I thought I made a motion to delay this, but I guess it failed for a second. I don't know that there's any discussion, I think.
Could we give him? When we were, from close, Mr. Born? Thank you, sir.
I was just saying that the addendum that we were just handed, I would, I would move that, that we delay this decision until we can hear directly from the superintendent, given the nature of the, this position is being filled and, and the relationship that this person will or won't have with us by nature of what they do and what I, what I understand to be the role and responsibility of this, this person.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I agree with that because of the nature, this position, not really sure what it entails truly. I would like to hear from the superintendent himself, not from, no offense to anyone on his cabinet, but I would like to hear his rationale.
Okay, and all I'm asking is to give courtesy to the superintendent. He had anticipated this, and so he had given Mr. Krantz the opportunity to speak to us, and that's, that's all I'm saying, enclosed, and we could still delay it, but, but give him that opportunity enclosed, okay? Thank you.
Is it? Thank you.
The next item is 5.02, receive the financial statement for the period ended September 30th, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, as Vice Chairman, Board Members, the report for the month of September doesn't have any particular items to cite other than just saying that we are nearing the completion of a revenue expenditure analysis along with the projection of contract salaries to year end. So by the end of this month, it's going to take us about another week to finish scrubbing all of the enrollment. We, we submitted our final enrollment for September 30th to the state on Friday as required, but there's a, the state waits until all of the localities submit, and then there's a, a period where you have to clear, where there's a clearance of conflicts. If Judge Field claims a student, we claim a student, then you've got to have that resolution. And so nothing can be finalized until that phase is, is completed. And so we're wavering anywhere on 300, plus or minus 300 students. That's a fairly significant number that's plus or minus 200. And while I said in here in this first paragraph that last Thursday I was fairly encouraged that preliminary results were revealed, that we might end up somewhere with another $1.7 million, that's evaporated as of today, and in fact, we may be going the other direction. So it's a big unknown, really, and so I hate to really say anything of any substance at this point, other than we'll know something in another week or so, so by the next board meeting, we'll make a presentation. We have several staffing requests in the wings from the elementary schools that are up in enrollment at this point, but again, we've got to have concrete final numbers before we commit dollars based on that. So we're working with it, and HR has allocated some temporary staffing to help relieve where people really need the help at this point in time until we can get to that point, so. Ask your indulgence until we can finish this process, and then we'll have a clearer picture for you at the next meeting. Unless there's questions, that's the extent of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Westbay.
Thank you.
The next item is 5.03, receive and approve an athletic field irrigation renovation contract.
FY13, the City Council gave athletic discretionary funds to the school system for George With and Thomas Jefferson. One of the particular projects was that Thomas Jefferson was to redo the irrigation of their football field. We're asking school board approval. We're asking school board approval to proceed with that project. The cost is $18,550, and it'll take us less than a week's time to complete it once approved.
Jones? And you saw this is TJ's field, and you mentioned also funds allotted for George With as well?
The two schools I specifically mentioned were George With and Thomas Jefferson. And this was a project within, and I'd have to get to you exactly on where the monies have been spent and what money's left, but this particular project was one that I'm just learning about this particular fund with everything else we had, you know, going on during the summer, just to get openings and get our major projects done. But there is some funds still remaining that could be spent within George With and/or Thomas Jefferson, but I'd have to get you more information about that.
And nothing specific that you know of coming down the pike for George With?
Um.
Relative to that?
Relative to that, no, sir. I mean, I can think of needs that are there, but relative to this particular fund, no, sir. But I'll get back to you with an email.
That would be very helpful.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Krantz. We have a lot of capital needs here in Richmond Public Schools, and is drainage of a football field at Thomas Jefferson High School in the 1st District, is that really a necessary project that we need to undertake? We've heard such wonderful things about there. I'm kidding. I just, it's my good. It's late.
Thanks.
I'd move that we approve the contract.
Thank you.
Second.
Move in second?
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Muhammad?
Oh, yeah.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven zero. The next item is 5.04, approve bus leases.
When we came to y'all, is that, okay, bus leases, when we came to y'all back with the buses, we had to separate the purchase of the buses from the leasing because under the contract that we did on the purchase of the buses, the lease purchase of the buses, did not allow the financing base. So a separate RFP was done on the leasing. If you recall, the rate that we were using was 1.80 on an annual basis. The actual rate, and I'm, I'm just not going to say it publicly so the world doesn't know, but it is less than what the 1.80 rate was, and we would ask your approval to move forward, for finance to move forward and execute the leasing agreement. If that is done, you will see the new buses here during the first week of November 3rd. All buses were, and no PO's been done, no commitment was made by the school system. But Carter Machinery, Ann Bluebird stood up based off of the verbal representations, you know, the verbal presentation was done and what was said just in this room, and went ahead and have actually manufactured the majority of the buses. But as I said, there has been no purchase orders issued in any way, shape, or form. Okay? So we would ask your approval.
I move that we approve the bus leases so that we can get those new buses here right away.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. The next item on the agenda is item six, other informational items. Posted on board docs was 6.01, receive information regarding the VSB practices of promise for school in challenging environments summit. I believe that is a free summit, and there is one board member who is, has requested to attend that, but the information is on board docs.
Colleagues, I encourage you all to look at this information and see if it's something that you'll be willing to participate in, think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
My computer died.
It's in Richmond, I believe.
Yeah, Ms. Larson would like.
This is, if you all recall, Terry McAuliffe had an announcement a couple of weeks ago in Petersburg where he talked about the challenging school systems of Virginia, and we were one of them. So this is a conference that they're pulling together, that the expectation is that everyone from our board attend to discuss, you know, best practices, share challenges, and figure out ways to move forward. So I believe it would be us, Petersburg.
Norfolk.
Norfolk. So it, it is very important, and it's important that we show up.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. We have nothing under the consent agenda or items for action. The next item is item nine, new business.
Ms. Muhammad?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to, and we don't have to discuss this or vote on this tonight, but I just want to share with the board that I did have a conversation with Mr. Bourne this evening about possibly providing a championship ring for the principal and the athletic director at John Marshall High School. But of course, currently, as our policy reads, and Ms. Lily was kind enough to give me the entire policy this morning, we would have to bring that to you all as a board to see if you all would approve us purchasing two rings out of our constituent services budget for the principal and the athletic director. Mr. Bourne agreed that we could go half, and I wanted to bring this forward because, of course, you know, they won the championship, and even though neither one of those individuals actually bounced a ball or played on the team, but they were two instrumental advocates for the players. Both individuals made sure that those students remain academically eligible. They, they just, they went beyond the call of duty, and I'm not saying any other principal or AD wouldn't do that, but I just, and I would do this for any other school if they won a championship, for the principal and the athletic director, because I know very well the effort that goes into making sure that the community is involved, the school is involved, the parent is involved. So I would like for you all to consider, we don't have to vote on it tonight, but the next time we meet, if we can vote on, Mr. Bourne and I go in half on providing rings to, to the principal and the athletic director.
Any other new business? Ms. Taylor?
I would like to have this, the conversation of school uniforms come back to the, the table prior to the next budget so that we can get a definitive idea of what the cost would be and what the need would be for assistance with affordability. I think it would be a lot less than having to buy department store clothes and then bring that kind of uniformity across the district. If we could readdress the bail schedule on a high school level along with the change in possible hours, start time, to give them the, the rest that they need and on the early part of the day and kind of coincide with being able to pick up their younger siblings. And if we could have a discussion about John B. Carey again and what the possibilities are of bringing that to a 6th grade level and what the impact would be across the district, if other schools need to be considered as well. And if we can take a peek at the, what the grading, I don't know what it's called, the grading system looks like as, as far as policy is concerned. I know that we've spoken to the new system we have in place. I've had some in-depth conversation with both Dr. Bedden and Mr. Jeffers, but I just want to make sure affirmatively, parents have access to their students' grades, and I want something written down that they can reflect on, that if a system is not in place, there's a backup plan so we know what assignments our children are missing, what their grades are looking like from one test to the next. And so those four things. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Larson?
I just wanted to mention, I got invited from, by a teacher, Judy Zimmerman, at Huguenot to go on a field trip to the Virginia War Memorial today, and my children, who are seven and nine, are actually on fall break because they go to year-round school. And so we all went and we met a bunch of the high schoolers at, at Huguenot and did this field trip, and I just want to say, our students were amazing and were very engaged, and it was a really informative visit. I'd never been there before, but it's a great place with an awesome view. So I got real-world experience of a field trip and how meaningful they are and how lucky we are to be in a place with so many resources.
Did you take the bus?
No, I, I did not take the bus, and they didn't even know who I was for a while. So, yeah, they were, they were really into it.
Okay. I'd just like to inform you all, this morning I was with the Peter Paul Development Center annual event, and Richmond Public School students were shining very brightly this morning, from Franklin, from Bellevue, I believe Ginnipark also, but you all would have been very proud to see our students just shine. So. Any other new business? Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is item 10, closed session.
I would like to, my colleagues, we are actually, based on our own time schedule here, 30 minutes ahead, we will be reconvening upstairs. We do have a fairly substantial closed session.
You don't want to go over there? They opened the room for you. We can go upstairs.
Would you all prefer to go over here?
Yeah.
Okay? We will gather over here, all right?
Pursuant to the personnel exemption at 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, I move that the school board of the City of Richmond convene in closed session to discuss the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board, or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor? All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? You're now enclosed.